We are officially live.
Yeah, it was just approved. Approved the, I guess, authorized mayor to sign the agreement. Is that right, Don? Yeah, no, I got it when I got here Saturday and Monday and I saw the thing and realized it was on Tuesday morning. Set the.
I hope yours is very good too, Jerry.
Thank you.
The agreement was expired.
I appreciate it.
Happy New Year.
But I didn't realize it was expired.
Do you want your web server?
And I said, well, if we're following there, we have to make sure we have an agreement.
Just wanted to remind you guys, we are live.
Well, we are live. You need to fix that clock.
Nobody loses clocks.
Three minutes. Oh, I see. They don't.
Please don't make him go up there and get it again.
All right, well, I'll call the Village of Webster Board meeting for January ninth to order. And to stand, please, with me, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Thank you. Evening.
Seated.
Let's see. I think first of all, we'll start off the evening with a quick presentation. Mr. Pender from the Historic Preservation Commission. Would you like to address the board's agenda?
Well, I hope you, happy new year to all of you. Yeah, so and I want to just give my best to Judy, who I know is feeling under the weather and couldn't be here tonight. We had our, I did a presentation at the December 30th meeting about historic districts. And I was really back up here tonight just to see what your, what your thoughts were. And just in case I mess something up, we have two of our members here tonight. Josh and Bria. And they are, and I just want to thank them for all the work they've been doing through the last couple of years in historic preservation. And Josh has been one of the driving forces behind getting this material together about the historic districts. So glad to have their support here tonight. So is there anything I could answer? Questions that you might have had over the last couple of weeks about this? And just to give you a sense of where we would be going, there is apparently two particular, you know, two different motions that the board can make to make this process go forward. The first would be to go forward seeking the grants so we can help, you know, bridge the gap on the payment for the historic survey or historic structure survey. Or the second one would be to just appropriate the money. I think the second one's not going to be as popular, but those are really the two, the two options or nothing at all that we could do going forward to get this done. Josh, is that pretty accurate?
Yeah, either Preserve and Y Grant, which rolls into the spring, or self-funding, which is obviously that's a, you know, whenever he chooses to do it.
We could, I suppose one way of looking at this, we could apply for the grant, see if we're successful and then, and then proceed from there too. So that's another option.
No matter what, the process wouldn't really begin in earnest until the fall. So that's timeline lines, that's where it would be.
When would the grant have to be written up?
So April. April is when the decisions are made. We have a couple of months to pull things together. But it's not super, super involved. It can be done.
Yeah, I don't think, I think the timeline is good for the grant to, for us to work on. And I guess our thought would be just give us, if you could just give us a sense of whether or not we should move forward on that, that would be where we'd start moving in that direction. Do you have any?
My personal opinion and feeling on it is if we have the ability or if we can receive this grant, Preserve New York Grant, that I would be in favor of moving forward with it. I'd have to think it over again in terms of the village putting up $18,000 for it. But in terms of moving forward, applying for the grant, I personally might be in favor. But that's my opinion.
Okay.
I don't know how anyone else feels. Carl, you probably do.
Well, long disease, grants take to be approved?
It's not long, right?
Decision comes in the spring and then by fall, the work will begin.
Yeah, so that long. We would, we're going to, we would put it together now, put the application in and then the answer would come back relatively quickly.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor that that's a good idea to go for the, for the grant. But if we hear early announce that it's not going to go, then we should talk about.
Yeah.
We'll exchange for it.
Absolutely.
Also, for what it's worth, the village is standing right now because of recent grant wins with the forward grant. The village is in a pretty good spot to look good for this grant. So the time is right, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Do you have any thoughts? Yeah?
Comes up.
All right. Is that, is that good enough to just proceed?
I think so. Worst comes to worst, we can just get a formal resolution in front of them at the next meeting in a couple of weeks.
So we are, we are talking to Landmark Society about now what that motion would look like if we needed it. So that's what, because they have, I don't know exactly what you're going to say, but we just want to make sure that whatever language the motion would be, it would be something standard that had gone through other, other boards before. So, sorry, I'm kidding, right?
Well, I just think if you're going to have the Historic Preservation Commission put the actual grant application together, then when you got it together, you present it to the board and they, they take a resolution and authorize the mayor. I assume, you know, you're not going to sign the grant, the application, the mayor will sign. So it'd just be a resolution, authorize the mayor to sign the grant application.
Okay. Right? That's fine? All right, good, we'll do that.
We just can't, we just can't go, we can't obviously make that decision ourselves.
Right.
But.
Okay. Good solution and we'll.
But I heard you guys volunteered to put it together, right?
Yeah, we'll put it together. And we'll seek some help from the Landmark Society when we can to get their advice on the pathway of putting it together. So, all right.
I was just going to say, just keep in mind, you know, when the village board meets so that you can get that resolution in advance of when the deadline is to submit the grant application.
Yep, absolutely. The schedule is blazing in my mind.
That would be like end of, end of February, beginning of March, if it's due in April?
Yeah, I think that's probably a reasonable timeframe, right?
I don't know. Decel or whatever.
Okay.
We can, we'll make it happen.
Yep, we'll make it happen. All right.
Two questions.
Yep.
What about the clock? What's happening with the clock?
Well, maybe Jake's, maybe Jake's helping to answer this question. But I believe the clock was on hold until the four grant application for the project is approved or not. I'm suspecting it will be, but it's just a suspicion. In which case that is part of that grant, the grant application for the improvements for the project.
And the statute?
The statute is letting the small grant fund for the board grant. And assuming that the state approves a small project grant fund, all the applications in that fund have to be resubmitted this coming year, actually. Because they're going to give us, they'll give us the award, I'm thinking in the next couple of months, right? Yeah. Springtime again.
Six months.
Yeah, so, so we will know whether or not the small, that small project fund has been approved. If it has, then you have to reapply and then there's a committee formed to decide whether, to decide what small projects. I know, it's a lot of, a lot of stuff. But whether or not which small projects are going to be approved in that, from that fund. We were hopeful that historic preservation would get the statute and then we would, we'd proceed from there. So, so there's a little bit, so there's, basically to sum it up, there's a long way of saying there's a few steps to go, but we're not, we're not quite there yet.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, well, thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Okay. At this time, I would like to open up the floor for any comments and questions that audience may have for the board. So the floor is open. Anybody would like to address the board? If not, then I will quickly close that public comment portion of my meeting and we will move now, since it is past 7:05, to a public hearing. We have here a public hearing tonight regarding the dedication of a portion of Cedar Way Circle. I would open.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Floor is open. Anybody who would like to address the board regarding the dedication of the portion of Cedar Way Circle? And I would think if someone is coming for 7:05, they would be here, so. Then I will close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to wait, but if you look at the offer of dedication, the way that Pride Mark Homes did it was they put the acceptance of the offer on the last page of it. It's in your packet. Look at the last page. There's the acceptance. And it's done by resolution. So I know you usually like to wait, but since there was no one speaking for or against at this public hearing and rather than wait another two weeks, you could take the motion to, you can, you can take a motion to accept the offer of dedication and then you can fill in the blanks there and sign that.
There's one down?
Here.
Yeah, yeah, that's, the very last page is the acceptance. One more, there you go. And that, and that kind of dovetails with this temporary easement that you were talking with Jake about later. The sooner they get this, the road dedicated, the less time the temporary easement actually affects. Because this dedication will cover the area that the easement is going to cover. And I believe, Pride Mark already sent us the deed. Do you have the original deed?
I do not.
I've seen a copy, but you sent me the copy, but I don't know where the original is.
The deed and it just got the.
There's the TP form and the RP form that someone on the village has to sign.
Okay. And that's at the next meeting and then they would accept the conveyance, right?
Right.
Yeah, because I think I still have to review the utilities once they just got a拟议的 deed.
They've sent us a proposed, they've sent us a proposed deed that you then take a subsequent resolution to actually accept the deed and then they record it. But this is the first step, is with the motion to accept the offer of dedication.
Okay. Then I have presented before the board this offer of dedication. So pursuant, pursuant to village law 614, a public hearing was held on the ninth day of January 2024, at which time all interested parties were heard. Subsequent to the public hearing, a resolution to accept the offer of dedication for certain streets was considered. A motion and a resolution was voted upon with, and we'll have to do that. The village hereby will accept the offer of dedication and directs the owner to prepare such documents necessary to convey the land to the village by deed. Such conveyance shall be subject to a second resolution of the village board to accept the deed. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to accept this offer of dedication.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So then, Mr. Mayor, this is, you know, tomorrow or whatever, sign it in front of Heather or, I've got two other notaries in the village hall.
Yes, we do. We know these.
Lots of notaries, so.
But now there will be a second one, which is.
The actual deed then will, Jake's going to make sure if everything on the deed is okay.
Jake, do we need to go back in time for this or, or not? Is today the ninth date acceptable?
For the easement?
For this.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So have that as of today.
Okay. Very good. Okay. And at this particular point, we will move to regular village board business, which would be first of all to approve the minutes from December 30th, 2024. And those three minutes in front of you. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Geez, I don't want to do it this way now. Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito? Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I had an opportunity to look them over today. There weren't too many. But one, I did have a question on and it was answered. And that was the fact that the town did not bill us for the last five years regarding a portion for the sewer. So instead of $5,000 and some dollars a year, they just, for $20,000. So I was told that we would probably not be seeing those again as we're establishing our own sewer system.
Shut up.
But it does bother me that we were not billed in a timely fashion per year.
Oh, go figure.
Go figure. But anyway, other than that, I have, I don't have a question anymore.
I'm okay with that too.
And I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll, you just don't even need us here tonight. I'll second it.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer? He went out of order, sorry. Motion passes. So time will go fast.
Next, we have a resolution to consider seeker for the reimagine Webster Brownfield Opportunity Area Plan.
The, the, the short version is, it's, it's a, you don't need to read the whole thing.
I won't read the whole thing.
The short version is it's a type two action, which by definition, you don't need any environmental review. So the resolution is, is to basically declare that it's a type two action because it's basically just a study looking to the future to maybe do some things that wouldn't be a type two action. But the study itself is just type two because it's not committing the village to any, you know, any particular construction or project or anything like that. But if you want to read all those whereas, just go ahead. Especially the second one, because I edited that one.
Did he pants himself on that drawing?
Jake did the first, Jake did the others.
Oh, they were, they were recrafted by Callier.
Wow. We have a secret resolution of the Village of Webster Board of Trustees concerning the nomination of the reimagine Webster Brownfield Opportunity Area Plan, BOA, to the New York State Department of State for official designation. And I'll read this. Whereas the Village of Webster completed the reimagine Webster Brownfield Opportunity Area Plan using funding provided by New York State Department of State. Through the Brownfield Opportunity Area Program, the BOA plan includes comprehensive analysis of historical and existing conditions within. The BOA was a focus on documenting sites with potential environmental contamination and identifying appropriate redevelopment strategies aligned with community goals and market feasible uses. The reimagine Webster BOA plan also includes a unified community vision and area-wide plan to guide future development and a detailed action plan for implementing the recommendation. Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed nomination is within the definition of a type two action described within six New York NYCRR, section 617.5.
That's probably the part Jake put in.
C, and is otherwise precluded from environmental review under the Environmental Conservation Law. Last motion to.
Nicely done there, Mayor.
Just waiting for a really long name.
I'll second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So after you, your official, after you sign it and all that, Heather, you got to get it to whoever's submitting the actual BOA nomination and stuff. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's Danielle or if it's Jake or who's got all that stuff.
Ken would need to do that, I think.
Yeah, Kim or the.
I'll send it to everybody.
We'll send it, send it to whomever at Callier's. Because this is the last thing they need to submit it on.
Okay, well, the other thing here, we have a bunch of actual report. Not going to, not a resolution on that, but it is for your information as to where we are currently. So you can take that and move that over, if I would. All right. That concludes our village business. We move now to reports and first of all, I guess I would ask our attorney. Don, do you have anything that you would further like to bring to the board?
No, I was just going to bring up the, you know, accepting the offer of dedication, but we took care of that beforehand.
Thank you. Then we will move to our clerk, our board to his office and. I guess we move.
Did you want to? Yeah. Did you want to talk about the other thing or did you want me to? About the.
Overriding?
Yeah. That was the only thing I was going to say. That it would be coming.
I think that we, let me sure if I have it with me. Oh, yes. I don't know if it's part of your packet or Don, if it was given to you only. But I would like to consider looking further at proposing a local law. It's a one-year deal, I guess. The state says that they're year by year allowing us to, and in the words, and I like the words that are used here, authorizing if determined necessary and or appropriate, the adoption of a budget for the fiscal year commencing in 2025 that requires a real property tax levy that's in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in general municipal law, section 3C. I think that I would like that put before the board for consideration. And to Don, maybe in terms of writing it up so that it is available. It simply says here, should it be necessary and therefore we have it as in our back pocket. I'm just bringing it up now because it may have to be done now, but I'm putting it for, for consideration. It may be done writing up.
But it's just, in my view, I think it's premature because if every municipality did this in their back pocket every year, it basically renders the tax cap meaningless. Because you can override it just by a, you don't even need a, just by a majority vote because you've already done the local law, even if you don't need the local law. And we're going to, and you, so think about it at the public hearing. So what's the public hearing going to be? You're going to tell the public, well, we probably aren't going to need it, but this is just in case. Well, you know what I'm saying? I think the intent of the law when the legis, the state adopted it was that if a municipality was looking to actually having to override the cap, then go ahead and adopt one of these local laws. You got till the end of April to do it, you know, so why doing it in January?
No, I was just saying to bring it up in the next couple of meetings, but we just wanted to know if we could rewrite it, that's all. Because what it says on there is to protect us if some, in the event where something happens, it gives you the flexibility. And if you do wait until April, because it has to have a public hearing and go to the, be sent to the state. So we're just hoping to do it more in February or March.
I'm just proposing and throwing this out now for consideration.
I understand that.
Possibly having something in our back pocket that we can, in, in the February or March, consider.
But if you don't feel that, we were just trying to get it as, as our practice every year. But if you, I get, I see your point though. But then if you do, then you're in trouble, which one of, I sent you those. But one of them explains that in the event where you do and you don't pass the local law, then you're in trouble. Whatever you guys want to do.
I'm just putting it out right now.
Well, again, to me, it just, it just, it makes the tax cap kind of superfluous. Because, because you can, you can simply override it every year by just a majority vote because you've already taken this resolution even way before your budget, you even know it's going to be in your budget and where the budget is in, in relation to the tax gap. You know, so I was just saying, get down the road a little bit till Danielle's actually started to work up a budget. And if she says, hey, maybe we better do this because we're close, okay, then you can, you know, you can explain it to the public that way. Other than, oh, we got it in our back pocket. Well, okay.
Yeah.
I guess if I'm, if I'm a tax, if I'm a taxpayer, I'd be thinking, but wait a minute. The reason for this tax cap is to try to control spending. But if you've already taken a local law to override it, how is the tax cap not trying to control spending?
That's a good point.
Good point.
Droning in for the lamp and Don went, why?
Don, you have the opportunity here to formulate something that could be boilerplate.
I understand that and I will, and I will do that. I just, you know, we looked at Danielle, like when do you, you know, I don't know what the budget calendar is for. When you think.
We do, I mean, you guys, you guys have the budget calendar. We start budget workshops, I think in the middle of February. So in another month, we'll start meeting about the budget.
Eighteenth.
And we can certainly, at one of the workshops in order to plan it from there.
Surprised you didn't do your research. I usually tell us. There's 22 municipalities that do this. These workshops are, it's a fair point.
I think that they are, generally they do pass them just because of, not necessarily because they're going to have, go over the tax gap, but in cases of an error in the calculation and they go over it. So it's more of.
I think there's other things that protect that. I don't know if there's, if we made an error.
That's, it's pretty bad if you do, if you go over.
Hundred percent.
So just best practice is what it's recommended.
We instantly have this conversation again next month.
Yep. Darren and I were just.
So, so for, so if you're, if you're, if it's February 18th, so there's a board meeting, what, February 20th? Or no, the 13th?
13th, okay.
It's either the 13th or the 27th. Take a resolution, no, take your resolution there to set the public hearing to be in the beginning of March.
Yeah, that's fine.
At least you, at least you'll have some numbers to show what your budget is to, so.
We were just asking if we could provide it to make it more general, that's all. Like, once I said.
I guess you can.
Okay.
It's a costume.
Doesn't involve this.
Not that we were setting any date tonight. It was just something that was brought up for that, you know, an opportunity to write something and it would be then. for that, another opportunity to write something and that would be then, something that we could use in the future. And I kind of like the way in which this is written. Okay? So we had a discussion. We will, we run. Anything else from the clerk?
No. Danielle? I'd like to review the...
You got it.
Audit findings and financial statements for the fiscal year that ended May 31st. I think overall it was, I think it was a good audit. They had two findings. The one was regarding our internal controls about the vendor change report, which we have since corrected. We have corrected this, and as of October, I'm reviewing, I'm running the vendor change report, signing off on it, and Heather is also reviewing it and signing off on it. And that's for payables if we've created new vendors or we've changed addresses or who we're paying. The other finding was, and this, we continue to struggle with this a little bit, with getting quotes to go along with purchase orders. However, we've also since changed our purchase policy to go from $400 to $1,000 regarding purchase orders. So I'm expecting that for next year's audit that will be corrected. And some good news is that the Stewart Fund is no longer showing a deficit on assigned fund balance because we changed it from an enterprise fund to a governmental fund. They also wrote in the report that the debt reserve was not used to make principal payments on debt during fiscal year, which was also positive. And the village implemented a procedural review and approved the payroll packet prior to payment. The other, one thing that, you know, we do need to work on, and we had this conversation previously, is the unreserved fund balance. We do need to start moving some funds to reserves. It's certainly an opportunity. We currently have 2.7 million. Oh, sorry.
It's big enough.
We currently have 2.7 million in reserves. I forgot where I was. And those reserves are the ones that we can, unassigned fund balance, 2.7 unassigned fund balance. Our fund balance policy says that we should be around 30% of our appropriated, appropriated budgets. So in this case, we should, that number should be around 968,000, not 2.7. So we really like, I'd really like to start thinking about getting money in reserves and also how we want to, a plan to work those reserves or unassigned fund balance number down.
On a page.
Hmm?
On a page.
Sure. So as we go into budget season, that's certainly something that we can, we can have a conversation about.
Sure.
And yes, definitely should have a conversation about it. There wasn't a lot. There wasn't a whole lot. Everything was good. I mean, everything was good news other than, than what I spoke about. So I, and do you guys have any conversation or questions from what you guys reviewed? It really, it really was. There was only two findings. We had a couple conversations and went back and forth a little bit, and it was a, I learned a couple things about YACU Fund that I didn't know prior. So we learned a few, wondered a little bit more about the software than what we had realized. But other than that, it was a good audit. I just really wanted to take home the importance of moving money to reserves.
Yeah. So the need of thought of what reserves do you want to establish?
Well, you can establish them or you can move the funds to reserves you already have, like vehicles. We can also use it, you know, when we, when we start to budget workshops, we can talk about how to use it with next year's budget. You know, and we need to look at if there's projects that we're not going to complete this fiscal year and moving those debt money to reserves. So we have it, so we're not rebudgeting the same thing. Jake and I had had a conversation about a loader, and my thought was instead of leasing them, we use the fund reserve fund balance to pay for it. You know, we can always put it in, we can start putting it in reserves, and instead of leasing equipment, we pay for it. So we're not paying the finance charges. I mean, we certainly can, can have a, a bigger discussion about it during the budget workshops. Which we will be having discussion about reserves in the budget workshops, but I certainly want you guys to think about what, you know, how you guys want to, to deal with that.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Um.
Does this mean?
I think that...
First time, second time, you seen?
This is our third time.
Third?
Third time. Once before I started and twice since I've been here. I mean, they answer questions pretty quickly. They're very easy, you know, you send an email, they're quick to, to answer. I think that my, my biggest frustration was last year was with the bill when he came here to, to that. But I mean, I think that was my only frustration, my biggest frustration. But I've had a couple of questions the last few months about 1099 vendors and he answered me the same day, so.
Yeah, wait till the bill comes.
Right. He doesn't bill us for emails.
Right.
Yes. Which next time I will make sure I look at the contract before I ask him to come in.
Yeah. Which is why he's... Because it's like...
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, and I would...
They'll survive with them. Personal actions.
Thank you, Danielle.
You're welcome.
Jake, our, Jake?
Couple, couple things building off of what Danielle said about the reserves. We had a brief discussion on the backhoe. I'm waiting for a little more information. We had a budget to replace a backhoe. We had an anticipated lease payment for that backhoe, but I absolutely appreciate Danielle's point of, you know, if we have the money available, not incurring finance charges through a lease, if we can, if we can get that backhoe. So I'm going to get the rest of the paperwork together. I'm waiting for one more letter from the dealer, it would be off of a New York State bid. Get with Danielle and formulate something to present to the board, sorry to interrupt, but if we're taking out of a, it's a type reserve, I think there's a permissive referendum on pulling it out of that, that's 20 days, I think it is, so, so we might even look as, if we can, at the next meeting if we're done something to get that Paul rolling because nothing's getting cheaper every chance they get. It seems like every, across the board, it's not just this under, but across the board, there's a, you want another month, there's a price increase for this, and there's a price increase for this and that, so. And so far, their initial proposal was a pretty decent trade-in value on our existing backhoe, which is, say it's eight years old now, but it's, you know, we load salt with it, it gets a lot of, a lot of abuse, so. That, and then there's a, also in front of you, there's a temporary easement. They, we had signed one in, well, they signed it the 13th of October of '23, and we signed it the 28th, I think it was, of '23. So I don't know, I'd have to ask our attorney which date. When it says it's, it expires one year from the date of execution, I'm assuming the last one, the person that signed it, right? So it would be the 28th of October it expired. When I was out, there was a question, there's a new village resident on one of the streets that the easement had covered, but it was on a little stub road off of that, and their driveway's off the stub road, it wasn't getting plowed. You know, and the contractor wasn't there, it wasn't getting plowed because they weren't there plowing, and we were plowing all the rest of it, so we, we took care of that, but when I got back in, I didn't have access to the other agreement. I got back and I realized that it expired, so we should probably make sure this is in place if we're over there plowing, and it's going to be for those roads that we're looking at, if you just accepted the offer of dedication for it. So it's a real short temporary easement, but we're going to make it a two templates. We didn't change really much, but they just updated it from October of '23 to now, and then it'll be, I guess, extinguished as soon as we take that, we get here to take the deed. So if we do that, then it just protects everybody, I think, if we're plowing over there. And this is, you know, of course, Greenbrier there, so you can research. Oh, and everybody says the lights that you guys came up with look really nice, so thanks to the guys for putting them all together, but I'm not a big fan of change, but they do look really nice.
You should read the comments.
Yeah, there's a lot of people, a lot of people, calls and comments, how nice it looks, it does, it's very nice.
Well, change, Jake, it wouldn't be butterflies.
Right. I don't know how a butterfly, I don't know, yes, Ray, it can fly.
Yeah, it looks great coming up.
Yeah, it does look good.
I even like that you decided to go right over all the signage instead of taking the sign off, I thought that was, you couldn't even give anyone a ticket for something because we technically bought the signs. I thought that was funny.
Daryl, can I read the comment?
This is something that I would need to sign, Jake?
Yes, sir. And one of the many, the only reason we'd have to authorize that is I could say.
Then I'll make a motion that the mayor be able to sign this temporary easement regarding the snow plowing and ice control with Brad Mark Holmes regarding Greenbrier crossing.
Trustee Belido?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Sorry. I was answering a question for Peter.
I don't want to read something.
Does it mean there are going to be two separate minutes?
Something.
How many were there?
Sorry. Okay. It says, I haven't noticed if there have been any comments on the village holiday decorations this year, but I must say that I like these better than any I can recall. The simplicity of decorating the poles and a straight string of lights on Main Street are tasteful and lovely. They don't blow in the wind or look overdecorated. Love them, and I commend whomever was responsible. My grandchildren, I love the candy cane lighted poles and the gazebo lights display. Made it look like a real small hometown from a Hallmark movie. Thank you so much.
Yeah, being on read the others, it's my idea, thank you.
It was from Webster. No, Jerry, then you said, no, that was my idea.
There are two lights that are out on the east side?
Yeah, north side of East Main Street, the corner one, and that string coming from there, and I think that has to do with the control for it. But I've noted that, Michael, that, at least that one I know of.
But there are two actual streetlights, don't we?
Yeah.
Are we awaiting the county or what?
About to see which ones, because some, one of them is a control issue, and they, the streetlights on East and West Main and South Avenue, kind of wacky, we own the poles, RGD owns it, pick for yourself, so we would call those in. The ones on North Avenue, now we own all of them, and then all the post stoplights in the old village, we own all of those, and then the corporate, that's something else. So I'll look on the way home and make sure I break down what poles there, and if you can coordinate with RGD, there's an online form, we can definitely fill that out, send them there pretty quick. But the one I want to have a guy look at first, the one on the corner there, Smiths, is I think that's a control. I don't think so, string of lights.
The bright light and the chipper. Is it a bright light?
Bright light, a bright light.
Chipper. That was found.
Well, I...
Jay, I have a minute.
No, that was it. Thank you. All right. Well, if anybody has anything else. Otherwise, our next meeting will be on Thursday, January 23rd, here at seven o'clock, and we look forward to seeing all of you, many of you. At least a couple of you again, so.
Feel free to show up anytime.
Yeah, feel free. At this point, I take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold.